Do you think that you have something in the purse?
I don't know yet. I need to check that.
You can bring my computer back. You don't think I'll see it on the screen.
We saw the transfer. All of them, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I need it. Babe.
Very good. Thank you. Good throw down afterwards. I think I looked at these already.
No, it's probably on the end of town. They had a corner to them below.
How are you signing?
Oh, no, not at all.
About an essential emergency or something.
Yeah, first, they were kind of before they put this in. So I was kind of wondering if that really would be.
I'm sorry. He doesn't sign. He doesn't sign this. Right, how the other one.
I should wait to take it for one eighty-five and three dollars. Yeah. I had a soft moment. You got a lot of things that I didn't. I said, "How could he run this? It breaks up." He won't get it. He won't collect it a second time.
Yes, that's all I saw.
I wasn't sure which one we got. Okay, so I have the damage. People back to red. We just kept talking. It's a question. I really should shop for my question more.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at five forty. I feel a little bit like the pitchers for the last two Atlanta Braves games. We're just called up from AAA and told the day off that they're pitching. Mary's not feeling well, so I'm going to the chair of tonight's meeting as well. Hopefully I'll ask whatever the first pitcher, which I think I've told him first did.
There is no relief pitcher, Phil, so you're still going with this.
Oh, good. Okay. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes, of which we have three minutes, for October the eighteenth, the actual select board meeting, the public hearing, and the site visit to the David Calgary property.
Yeah, I know we accept these minutes as.
As okay.
Any discussion?
That was a heroic effort by Martha, produce three sets.
Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, thank you.
And then I would like to take a motion to accept, since I have the time, the warrants dated.
To eleven one.
Eleven one, to eleven one.
I'll make that motion to accept the warrants as presented through November first, twenty twenty-one.
One second, one second.
Any discussion?
I might have had a question. Oh, where's the grant? There's a granite post on here. Where's that going?
We're putting a gate in over to the conservation fields over across from John Deere.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's kind of wide. It's a little bit more symbolic than it is functional, but we had some people drive out there last spring. Ironically, like two days before the Upper Valley Conservation Land Trust did their yearly walkabout, and so we got scolded a little bit. So we made an effort to put something up and kind of try and keep people out.
Was there already one granite post there, or why do you only need one?
There should be two. There's actually two on that particular invoice, I believe, for three hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's not, that's, it says one granite post, but for three twenty.
Yeah, I think there was actually.
There's actually two. That's not a bad price.
So what's the chain?
Yeah, we just over, you know, there's kind of an entrance way over across from John Deere. So just again, they, it's kind of a really wide swath. I haven't seen it, but I know they were working on it, so I'm not sure how wide it ended up being with the chain link fence, but that kind of granite post would be a little bit more fitted with the rural countryside type thing than this type of gate type thing.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other discussion? All four to accept them. Thanks, thank you. We'd make a note to everyone. Our colleague Curtis is actually with us remotely tonight. So if you hear some sounds from over there, Curtis will be discussing and talking with us. Adjustments to the agenda? Are there any? Okay, moving right along. Public comments. We have been asked a number of times if people could talk about the discontinuance of Town Highway Eight, and we will not be talking about that tonight. We will be talking about that a week from today at the public hearing and site visit. Well, at the public hearing, we'll be talking comments. Anything coming in from Lord?
Gary Trachier raised his hand. Do you want me to let him speak?
Yeah. Gary Trachier raised his hand.
Sure. Gary?
Good evening, everyone. I had a procedural question about the upcoming hearing and so on, and wondering whether the official parties to the process can submit written testimony to the board rather than appearing at the hearing in public. Also, can members of the public submit written testimony that would be, again, official on the record testimony for the hearing? And if so, to whom should that testimony be sent? And what would be the deadline for being received?
Gary, thank you for going to the Secretary of State on this one. Yes, citizens can submit testimony in writing, either through email or through an enclosure or through a thing called US Mail or the use of the Dropbox in front of Damon Hall. We ask that the correspondence be in by this coming Wednesday, which would give us a chance to copy it and collate it and have it as a package available for the public hearing. So yes, they can. Wednesday's the deadline, and yes, it will become part of the public record.
Slight deviation. Remember, there won't be a packet for the public hearing. So by US Mail, probably latest Thursday. Then email to me, P O Box three forty-nine.
Okay. So mail it to the Town Corps, P O Box.
Town manager.
Go ahead, Dave.
Gary, they can mail that to my attention at P O Box three forty-nine, Heartland Vermont zero five zero four eight. And they can send it, it's been our history that things that are mailed on Thursday usually get here on Monday, so I think that you're cutting it close if it goes out on Thursday. So just know that. And they can send it by email to D Ormiston, D O R M I S T O N at H A R T L A N D V T dot org.
But that Dropbox.
And they can also put it into the Dropbox. And again, if I get it, it will be submitted as testimony. So for email, I would recommend by Friday afternoon. But again, if I get it, so if it goes to me Monday morning, Dropbox Monday morning, it'll get in, but to be safe, I would put that in by Friday afternoon.
Okay, am I still being heard?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I just want to clarify that, of course, this is a very short timeline, and so a close of business on Friday would be a big help. And at very least, we need clarification between what Phil Hobbie said as Wednesday being the deadline and, or Thursday, and what Mr. Ormiston just said as Friday being deadline for email.
Friday, not Wednesday, Gary. And I would recommend Thursday or before by US Mail.
Okay, thank you very much.
Or the Dropbox as well, Gary.
Mary?
So when do we get to see all this testimony?
You are getting it live during the public hearing. It'll be submitted during the public hearing, so you don't get anything before your. It'll be submitted on that day, and then you can read it that day or during your delivery of session.
Any other public comments?
Sarah raised her hand. I'm not allowed her to talk. I'm not allowed. Not a last name. Save. Should I do it?
Could be Sarah. I don't know. Sarah, down here. Sarah Bruce? It could be. There's no last name.
Ask to unmute.
I'd like you to unmute, but how do you unmute? You don't give a.
You did it, Sarah.
This is Sarah Bruce. I have a question. I'm sorry I got on a few minutes late, but I believe you're talking about the meeting on the eighth. And my question is, will it be available for virtual attendance?
Sarah, it will not be.
And if it's a public meeting, is there any reason why it is not available for virtual attendance?
I'll try to explain that.
Two reasons. One, it's a public hearing, so there's a little bit more to it. And second, most importantly, it wasn't warned that way. So without it being on the warning, it's in person or written comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
See anybody else's hand?
Okay, it looks like we're good. Thank you. Let's go on to old business. We have with us tonight to help with the discussion of ARPA funding. Peter Gregory, and Peter, I don't know your colleague's name.
Sarah.
Sarah, okay. For the folks in the room, the ARPA funding is something which we, as a town, have been talking about how to best address identifying projects and understanding the rules of what can be done and can't be done. And our regional, Two Rivers has stepped up as the other regional commissions in the state to help towns address this issue. So I'm hoping that we can have a general discussion ourselves, but also maybe I'll ask Peter if you could start with saying a little bit about what you see on the horizon that other towns may be doing as to prepare for a townwide discussion of possible projects and implementation of those projects.
Well, thank you for inviting us here tonight. I think I will turn that question right over to Sarah, who has been leading up our ARPA outreach and learning about what the federal eligibility requirements are. So she knows probably better than I what towns are doing right now.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I think that's preferred.
Actually, the mic is there for reference. That mic's not doing anything. The owls are going to get your audio and video. But so people kind of know where the owls are best getting them, but since you're up close, you should be okay.
That's a fake.
It's an emotional support microphone. It kind of gives you a proximity base. Otherwise, people were kind of yelling in the back. But because we're using the owls, it's counterintuitive to have four audio sources because the owls are picking it up. So if she was way in the back, I'd ask her to come stand in front of the mic, but the mic itself isn't actually taking the signal.
So Sarah, well, this is a psychological profile.
So in response to the question of how other towns are approaching this, there are no federal regulations prescribing a specific process for how to go about deciding how to use these funds. And so every town's sort of going about it their own way. Some towns have actually started the process of having community dialogue and sort of having open public meetings to talk about options. And then the select boards are sort of taking that input and moving forward from there. Some towns are sort of going through, and villages too, I should say, because they're also recipients of these funds, are going through more of an internal process based on priorities that were identified prior to the ARPA funds even being made and sort of recognizing where's the unmet need that's already been prioritized by the town moving forward. So everybody's taking sort of a different approach right now. Some folks, you can, as an eligible use of ARPA funding, you can hire a professional consultant to go ahead and sort of spearhead the process. So I haven't heard of any towns actually taking that approach in the state so far, but that's an option. And I do know that the ARPCs have been busy sort of spearheading public meetings around their various municipalities around the state.
One of the things I see all of us struggling with to this day is what's in and what's out as far as eligible projects. Would you be able to, when we have a public session, to be able to guide us through that and help set some parameters for that?
Absolutely. Yeah, that was something that Dave and I discussed as being something that might be helpful, certainly to give a sort of broad introduction to the various categories of eligible uses and help, and like you said, set those boundaries for folks. There is, I should say, you know, there is quite a bit of detail and nuance in the regulations. So I would imagine that at an initial public meeting, you would stay fairly high level and talk about the sort of broad bins that things can fall into. And then the select board would, in its own process, following, you know, public input gathering sessions, sort of winnow down to make sure that you're meeting the nitty gritty of the requirements that are spelled out in the regulations. And Two Rivers is happy to assist with that, and BLCT is providing technical assistance as well for the really difficult questions.
Okay, good. I know we've had a lot of thoughts ranging from think really big and then later start to put a fence around the projects that actually are eligible, and then finally corral the projects that we could possibly implement. So I see three distinct pieces, you know, a real brainstorming. Or should we just go for the projects that we, the town feels, under your guidance, are eligible, list those, and then begin to, as I think you're saying, then have a second group, a much smaller focus group, to work on the practicality and the possible implementation of such products?
Something that Dave and I discussed earlier is possibly being a multi-stage process. I would certainly think that at a public input session, there's going to, it's a limited period of time, and there's going to be a lot of sort of big ideas that are floating around. So there would need to be some sort of next step in which you're really digging into the practicalities of whether a specific project and you've funded the cost estimate of that project, the timeframe in that project, because as you know, that is limited within the ARPA funding. And then like also sort of complementary sources of funding that could actually make a project possible to have a big So there's certainly some additional sort of steps of research that have to happen around different project ideas. And how the town approaches that could happen different ways, right? It could be a small focus group, as you suggested, it could be a purely select board endeavor. But I do think that there is that sort of that deeper guide that would need to happen following general community conversation.
If I recall from the last meeting, that the group had talked about Curtis, I don't know if you want to pitch in, or Martha, Mary, you were kind of looking for a little direction from Two Rivers. The idea was kind of to start with kind of like a large town meeting type discussion. And to, you know, generate enthusiasm and to educate the public perhaps as to, you know, look, we've got a million dollars worth of, you know, funding from, you know, the federal government, and it's for us to use. However, there's these kind of these strict, you know, strings attached. Phil, as you said, to kind of, you know, lay out what those criteria are and perhaps the do's and don'ts, so people have an idea as to where we can go with the spending. You know, so we're not, you know, completely over here or over here, that we have a general idea. And people can kind of start to have that general discussion and then Curtis, I think you were hoping to generate enough that there was a group that would kind of bubble to the surface and we would have a second, third, or even fourth type meeting and you know, perhaps what Two Rivers role would look like down the road, I think is a little questionable, but or, you know, as much or little as needed. You know, that was kind of my feel of the things.
Yeah, so if I were thinking about a structure that I think could give us what we wanted, that Phil outlined in his original document, being able to put together a committee of people who could provide recommendations to the select board. And we wanted to make that sort of as inclusive to all the residents of the town as possible, so we can get all the input from the whole town. I could almost see it proceeding in four steps. And some of these steps would be bigger than others and composed of multiple things. But the first two steps would both be public meetings. So the first one, we might have what you would call like a listening meeting. So someone from, I guess Sarah, from Two Rivers, would give a presentation about what classes, categories of funds that the ARPA funds can be used for, what types of projects could be done. And then the public would respond with their ideas about what they thought would be good in that, given those categories. And then a second publicly available meeting, that might be something like a if the first meeting's a listening meeting, this one might be like a winnowing meeting or a structuring meeting, where the goal is to take some of those ideas and focus on those and try to get a more more clarity on a subset of those ideas. And then at the end of that meeting, could basically be like, here are the participants that demonstrated that they were actively engaged and interested in this process. We would like to invite them to be part of a committee that would further develop these ideas and prioritize them and blah, blah, blah. Or we could say at the end of that meeting, this is the committee we're establishing. Who would like to be a part of it? Here would be the responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. And then that committee could function as long as it needed to, to provide the recommendations to the select board, which we would then, with the select board, with the town manager, would make the final decision on the allocation of those projects. So that's sort of my like pie in the sky idea. And I don't know exactly how that matches with Two Rivers or with Phil and of course, the rest of the board's ideas about how that might best be done.
I have a question. What are your two smaller steps?
Oh, those were with the smaller committee, that sort of bubbled up. And then the committee's recommendations to us.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, Curtis just outlined two public, potential public meetings, and then a third kind of an implementation sort of public, probably select board meetings. Can you refresh us on where we are with timelines? How much time do we have to do this and so on?
Right, so the funds need to be obligated by the end of the 2024 calendar year. They need to be spent by the end of the 2026 calendar year. So large infrastructure projects, the message we're hearing from the state is, you know, they really you need to be ready to hit the ground running if you want to use your ARPA funding on a significant project. But smaller, smaller projects certainly can still be in the conceptual phase at this point and still reach that timeline.
And then what's the ultimate deadline for completion of projects?
The end of 2026.
Okay, 2026, okay. Any thoughts?
What does that mean? We have to have the projects hit the ground running by when?
So funds need to be obligated, so that means under contract by December 31st, 2024.
Right.
So if you wanted, for example, to do a major overhaul of a water system, right? You would need to have done all the work, all the preliminary work to get yourself to the point where you're ready to go with the state. And the state is giving green lights and forward to that project by that date. And you've set up your contractors and you've gone on. So there's some, there's some stuff that needs to happen before then. If you're doing something, for example, like a planning study for a project, which you might want to do on a water system, then that's less moving pieces, right? And you could certainly get that done within the ARPA timeframe without stressing quite so much. But that's sort of where I'm going. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah, Gordon.
Sarah. Listening to Curtis sounds pretty complex. And I like to keep things simple. Do you have any thoughts about what Curtis said or kind of process you was outlining?
I'd certainly think that's a viable process. There certainly needs to be there certainly needs to be at least a step two, right? Where you're, where you're actually digging into, okay, well, somebody has suggested this infrastructure project. What is the real cost estimate around that? What is the timeframe for getting that done? What are the steps that would need to, you know, be taken to make that happen? And then, of course, there's the prioritization piece of that as well. I think that, you know, if you had want, if you wanted to do just one public meeting and then immediately go into sort of a subcommittee kind of a structure where you're doing the deep dive, you're doing all that research. That's another way we approach it. One of the things, as Chris was speaking, I was thinking might be valuable, especially if you go with just the one public meeting approach, might be to dedicate part of that public meeting to asking for the community to comment on what prioritization criteria might be valuable to the subcommittee as they're doing their work, right? To try to figure out, okay, what would make for a good project? If, you know, if we're looking at a large list of projects, what kind of factors should we consider in ultimately selecting the ones that we want to work on, right? And that can sort of elicit community values and things like that. So that's something to consider. The other thing I would, I would encourage you to consider as well is to have some, some sort of established channel of communication for the public to communicate with the subcommittee even after it started its work and you're no longer having public meetings if you decide to go down that road. So that maybe it's an established email address or something like that. So there's some sort of method for people to reach out with supplemental ideas or information. They have things to suggest about a specific project. So that's something to consider. I think that, you know, there are many different ways that you can go and get up the map, right? Because there's many different ways to do that, and it really depends on what the community's used to. So what kinds of processes you've used for other kinds of decision-making. And the level of community interest and how, you know, sustained you think that interest will be. If you think that folks are going to be really engaged and are going to turn up for two meetings, and you're going to get good feedback in each meeting, and it's going to move you forward, then I can see that as being really valuable. If you think that folks are, the interest is going to sort of die away after the first meeting, then maybe pack everything you can into that first meeting and get the subcommittee on as best a foot forward as they can to do their work. Does that help?
Sarah, you mentioned something pretty important, Chris Curtis.
I was waiting to see if it
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, believe it, believe it or not, Gordon, I like, I like simple solutions too. But the, the problem that was outlined in Phil's document that I thought the two-meeting solution really solved is the issue of who do you put on a committee? So, and, and I like what Sarah said, it's important when you're establishing this committee to think about how you've other committees in town as well. And most of our committees and commissions, they don't have a defined number of seats. We don't really have like competition, over-serving on them. We're really receptive to people who want to participate and want to give of their time and expertise to the town. And I think it's, it's important to do that in this process as well. But I'm worried if you just said, if you simply said, who wants to be involved with spending out all this money? Everyone would raise their, I mean, not everyone, clearly, but like a large number of people would raise their hand. So that idea behind the two meetings in a row was that that and, and that would allow for a self-selection into an increased level of investment by members of the community. So when Sarah was describing, maybe after your first meeting, the second meeting's so small that the interest wanes, that group, that smaller group at that second meeting, those are actually the people who would be prime candidates to help serve on that committee. So if that second meeting became small and if people were signifying their self-selection into investment into this process, I think that would actually be a good outcome.
Thanks, Curtis. Sarah, are there funds available for general communication to the folks in town? And I think one of the things that's, that's been alluded to is how do we touch our citizens and get them, generate interest and also generate involvement?
So ARPA funds can be used to pay for the administration of the ARPA grant, right? And so if that means, if that includes community outreach to make the best decisions you possibly can, then that's certainly a valid use of your funding. And Two Rivers, just in terms of time commitment and the workflows that we already have, we're not able to actually do the outreach for you, but we're there to help support with structuring the meetings and facilitating the meetings and answering questions and that sort of thing, providing technical assistance.
Well, I would ask my colleagues what do you want to do next? I can offer my thoughts, but I don't know what you guys think.
Let's set a date. Let's set a date for this first meeting. Make sure Sarah's available.
Yep, that's, I'm moving toward that for sure. Yeah.
Do you think that the breakfast idea is to completely answer the question, considering the COVID problem?
No. Because
You want to check with your You're responsible.
I'd say maybe on a really beautiful November day with snow falling and the winds howling.
You could do it outdoors.
Yeah. I think part of what Gordon is alluding to and what Mary's doing is I'm wondering if, Sarah, you would be available to work with a few of us to create a plan, dates and locations and feasibility of, as Gordon was saying, could we meet in person or is it really going to have to be remote? And then come back, quickly come back in two weeks or four weeks at the most, you know, to the board with a here are some suggestions. Here's an outline of what we're doing to create a date.
Sarah, I remember in the past, we had great success with, we had tables all around, like around these posts and breakfast meeting. People who did the breakfast were doing a great job and kept people all in a good mood and and the meetings were quite productive, worked well.
Yeah, it was part of the ARPA community connections and a mutual aid or should run that. Food is always an enticement. It's always good.
So at the moment, there's no outdoor activity in David Hall or the Rex Center?
Yeah.
Or the library?
Outdoor.
Featuring anything outside of, you know, meeting like a select board meeting or a planning commission meeting? There's no line dancing, there's no phone builders, there's no Democrats, Republican meetings or anything like that.
I'm going to ask the question, because that's what I figured.
Curtis raised his hand.
Yeah, so that's right, Curtis.
So Phil, it sounds like if you're saying put together a feasibility plan in two to four weeks, it sounds like you'd be thinking about a listening meeting would be the earliest, like the middle of January.
I wouldn't be surprised at that, and it also kind of fits that timeline. And we're still been advised by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns to move slowly and deliberately. But, but there's not a big rush to sort of get it, get everything done on the set, the general feeling, you know?
The other, the other option is, the other option would be to have the, of course, according to the availability of the experts from Two Rivers, have the listening meeting in the beginning, pre-middle of December. And then if there was a follow-up meeting that we decided was in the best interest, then that could be in the middle of January or the beginning of February. And I don't, I don't know that. I feel like the categories and Sarah's discussion about how the funds might be used, I think that's probably going to be pretty stable in between now and when the final rule is announced. And so it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem overly hasty to me to try to get something in the, in the early, middle part of December. But if everyone else thinks it is, then I'll, I'll just accept that that's wiser wisdom than my own.
Phil, I have a question. So Curtis, when are you coming back?
December 26th. So I am personally all for a breakfast time meeting, because that will make it much easier on my sleep schedule.
Okay. Any thoughts on how to proceed from our two guests here and experts?
And I think having an early December timeframe meeting, that sounds fine to me. I do think that the holidays are really going to put pressure on things. So it really depends on how much success you have had in your community trying to schedule things in that early December timeframe. If you've had good turnout for events like that during that timeframe, that sounds like a great sort of first step. If it's hard to turn people out in early December, then maybe wait until January when all of the busynesses sort of calm down a little bit.
Yeah, I think either way.
I would like some of us to volunteer to work with Sarah if that's good to
I feel your eyes on me.
There's not a political comment about going left or right. Okay, my, my colleagues here are all jumping up at one time.
Could we, could we suggest meeting with Sarah early December and then have the public meeting in and then have the public meeting in January?
I think that's part of what I'm suggesting, we suggest is that we need to work with you.
Yeah, we need a lot of it, Peter.
Peter and Sarah, I'll follow up with who is going to work with you. Okay. I'll lean on the chairwoman just sort of like that.
I'd be happy to. So just to, oh, you'd be happy to. Especially if I get to work with Peter. Though I like you too, Sarah. But no, Peter brings Peter to the party.
Okay. Any other questions from everyone that's here about the Penda and ARCA and what we're doing and ways to do it? Okay. Good. Well, thank you very much, Peter and Sarah.
Look forward to working together.
Great, thank you.
It's very exciting. What'd you say, there's a consensus that that first public meeting?
Yeah, I think it's more of our December meeting, December. Sumner Falls Management Plan. Hi, welcome, Rob.
Here's some... And I'm hoping that all of you have an electronic copy of the most recent draft that we put together, the management plan. These things that are in your hand though...
October 20th?
Yeah. The things that are in your hand though are... Are taken right from the plan. So Curtis, I'm sorry, we don't have the paper.
No, I, I have, I have the plan, Rob. But what I might ask you to do is you don't need to stand in front of the microphone, but would you mind moving forward a few feet so the owls can better pick you up? Sorry.
Get to the microphone.
The, the microphone doesn't work, the owls work.
Figure out where... Mary's good for you. Can you see that? Okay. So as the select board knows for sure, we've been, the Conservation Commission has been working for about eight or nine months now on a land management plan for Sumner Falls. Our goal is that we could turn that place into a four-season public resource with improved parking trails and educational opportunities. And this would include a detailed survey and marking the property boundaries. I pulled a bunch of bullet points out of the plan just to put everything in context. So the Sumner Falls parcel of land is a 55-acre tract. It has about eight tenths of a mile of Connecticut River frontage. And it's primarily used for river-oriented recreation. But the part that's used is, is down right near the actual falls itself. And it's about two acres of the 55-acre parcel. It was conveyed to the town by TransCanada in 2010. There were some deed restrictions, but the idea was that the land would remain largely undeveloped. And the uses, the allowed uses are public recreation, agriculture, forestry and education. There's a gravel road that runs from Route 5 down to the beach. It's about three tenths of a mile long. And then down near the beach, there's a small picnic area with a wonderful new picnic table. There are some parking areas down there. There's trash and recycling receptacles. And in the summertime, there's a portable toilet there. In the wintertime, the gate across the road up near Route 5 is closed. Lots of different canoe and kayak outfitters use that area to put in boats or take out boats. There's a portage trail that allows people who are coming down the river to bypass the rapids and take their boats out and put them in again down below the rapids. The main activities that people use the area for are fishing, swimming, birding, boating and picnicking. In the summer of 2021, we did a traffic survey with the help of Two Rivers. And that showed that on an average weekday in the summer, we were getting about 40 cars coming in, going out of the place. And on the weekend, that went up to about 80 cars a day. There have been several plant surveys done by the Nature Conservancy and the Heartland Nature Club and others. So 275 plant species have been identified on the site. Eleven of those are state listed. So that means that they're either rare or unusual or somehow threatened. Four of those species are considered very rare or critically in peril. And we have a lot of invasive species down there. Japanese knotweed is a big one. And there are probably another half dozen invasive species of plants that run along the shore. And in at least one case, one of those endangered plants or cluster of that endangered plant is slowly being encroached on by Japanese knotweed. So a plan to control that would be helpful. From a cultural standpoint, the site, there have been archaeological studies that show that the site has been occupied by the Abnaki for probably more than 1,200 years. And in the mid, early to mid 1800s, David Sumner built and operated canals, locks, bridges, ferries and a lumber mill all down on that site where the, where the dam is. You can see the remains of some of that activity. There are locks still there. Log drives were common in the 1800s through that area. So there's a lot of cultural and historical interest to the site as well. So we had a number of ways that we tried to get some public input. Back in February of 2020, we had a breakfast here in Damon Hall where Sumner's Falls was the topic. And we collected a lot of input from, from that. We also asked for public input from, on the listserv. And we received quite a lot of information from a lot of people in the town about how they use the area, what they would like to see different and what they liked about the current setup. From that, we proposed a series of recommendations. And back in June of this year, I brought that list of recommendations to the select board. You suggested that we prioritize those and also include a little more of the entire plan so that you have context. And so that's where this current version of the plan is coming from. And on, in this current version, we have tried to prioritize our recommendations into two things. One is the high priority, which are relatively quick and relatively inexpensive. And then medium priorities, which would be longer term and more expensive. And we'll talk about those in just a bit. But before we get to that, I wanted to make a couple of other points about timing. There are five dams along the Connecticut River that are currently being relicensed. And this is something that happens every 40 or 50 years. So it's not something that comes along every day. And there are currently a lot of negotiations with those power companies about, you know, what are the conditions we would put on them or the federal government would put on them in order to relicense their use of the dams. One of the things that's being discussed is that they're essentially making a lot of money off of using a public resource, the river. And so there's negotiations now with the Connecticut River Conservancy and others that these power companies should return some of that money to the communities along the river and help to support recreational activities on the river. The public comment period for that relicensing will begin soon. I think sometime in November. And if we have approved land management plans that outline some of the things that we might do in terms of recreational opportunities, that may help in those negotiations. Saying here are the sorts of things that, that power company money could support. The other thing is that recently, the town received a grant from Rise Vermont. The Conservation Commission wrote a proposal for signage along the Katy Brook Trail. Rise Vermont is, operates out of Mount Scottley Hospital. And their goal is to try and get people outdoors and a little more active. So they like projects that encourage people to get out and walk around. The Katy Brook Trail, we picked because that was, that's really an obvious choice for getting people out and walking around. But part of the effort there is that we've included some money for a designer, a graphic designer, to design a sign, kind of a look or a logo that we could use on all the public areas in town, including some in Fall. So some of the signage that we have as part of our recommendations, we, we may be able to get more money from Rise Vermont to help us with that. So as we see the next steps, is hopefully getting some feedback from you on this plan. And then deciding, or you deciding, should we get more input now that we have a kind of a draft plan in the works? Should we take that back out to the public and get more input on that plan? And then have the plan come back here for a select board approval? And then update and revise the plan. So that's kind of where we, how we see the project going forward. Then there's also, there's a map, total map on here of the property. So if we want to talk about specific things, we can do that. And then on the, the last two pages, we have broken up our recommendations into these high priority and medium priority projects. High priority, we felt should happen in the next couple of years. Most of this is done with all clear labor or minimal funding or funding that we could get from grants. One of the key things is to design some new signage around the entrance. People can't find Sumner Falls. They don't know it's there. And when they do know it's somewhere, they wind up driving down the gravel road and getting into the gravel pit. David Sleeker and I were down there walking this morning on that gravel road. And a couple of the people who came by driving big trucks said, you know, we had people lost here all the time who are looking for Sumner Falls. So some signage around the entrance would really be important. That could include things like hours of operation, safety issues, rules of use and so forth. And also could include a way that people could link to an electronic map or other information electronically about the site. One of the comments that we got back from a lot of people when we were looking at public input was that people didn't feel like the property was very safe. They felt like it was, it looked rundown, it looked like it was neglected. And so one of the things that we feel would be important to do fairly quickly is to try and improve that perception of public safety. I think that that can be done by having the place feel like it's well-maintained, that there are regularly people there. And we've talked about maybe having some Sumner Falls stewards who would be volunteers, who would just go down to the site once, maybe once a week and talk to people, make sure everything looked okay. Dean and Susan Greenberg do this kind of a thing, Matt Eschbawen. And I think that that model would be good for Sumner Falls as well. The town regularly cleans, in the spring, cleans all the debris off of the beach. But I think that there are some improvements we can make to the beach about, lots of the junk we find when we're down there picking up garbage is related to fishing. And you can make a very simple receptacle for collecting fish, fishing line and hooks and lures and stuff like that. There's also a lot of erosion that happens when it rains. Water runs down the road and cuts big gouges in the, down into the beach. And so looking at some kind of longer-term solution for that. And then developing a plan for controlling invasive species. We currently have two public workdays, Greenup Day in May and Source to Sea Cleanup in September. So we recently had one of these. In the September cleanup, we had 11 volunteers. We picked up over 250 pounds of trash. And that was after Greenup Day had been in May. So it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff there that just gets left. People dump tires, microwave ovens, all kinds of crap. We also want to take a look at where the endangered species are and what can we do to try and protect those from encroachment by invasive species. We've also been testing water for E. coli and for nitrogen, no sort of phosphorus, and E. coli. We have 15 years, over 15 years of data now on water testing there at the site, which we would propose to continue. We also think that it would be worth having a county forester walk around the property with us and give some recommendations on how best to maintain the forest health down there. One of the concerns we always have these days is what would be the impact of Emerald Ash Borer? Fortunately, at least if you drive down the road there, there's very little ash. I think there may be a half dozen ash trees on that access road. So I don't see that that would be a, a big impact, at least along the road. I have not looked up on some of the other parts of the parcel to see what the impact would be. But just having a forester give us some impressions, I think, would be a helpful thing. And then if we look longer term at our medium priority projects, trying to get, get some kind of a written history of the falls, I think would be really useful. Right now, Jabe Wary is just an encyclopedic. He has an encyclopedic knowledge of the history of Sumner Falls. And I've spoken to him about trying to get some kind of written history. He's very willing to do that. And I think that if we could get some of that down in writing, then we could have some maps that showed, if you were there at the falls, you could see where things used to be, where the mills were, where the canals, where the dam was. And we may also include some of that in an interpretive trail, which leads us into the next bullet there about improving the trails. Right now, there are really no trails except that the... Right now, there are really no trails except the road that runs down from Route 5, and so we feel like there's an opportunity for a lot of new trails. There's one, there's an old road that runs from the current access road up behind the falls to some stone foundations, and we could have some kind of a historical or cultural interpretive trail there. There's a part of the area, just as you come in on the access road, if you go down a little bit and go off to the left, there's a plateau up there that's really nice and fairly flat. You could have a trail up in there. There are opportunities for trails that would run either on or along the gravel, the road that goes down to the gravel pit. That's actually part of the town property, but the gravel pit people have access to the, they have an easement on that road. But they only use that for three seasons, so in wintertime, they close that down, and that could also be a possible place for cross-country skiing or snowshoeing. And then just getting the word out about some of the things that are available at the falls, and coming up with some kind of a publicity plan. And then the bottom one here, I think, is fairly important. If we're going to make this a four-season resource, we need to have a place where people could park that would be plowed so that they could use the area in winter. Right now, people park outside the gate if the snow is not too deep, but if the snow is heavy, then the plows just completely bury that area, and there's no place at all to park. So one of the proposals we're making is if we, if you go down the access road just a little way, on the right, there's a kind of an open flat spot that if we move the gate a little further in, you could develop a small parking for two or three cars that could be plowed and would make that site available in the wintertime for snowshoeing or skiing. Maintaining the seasonal garbage and recycling, portable toilets, stuff like that, putting in a dog waste bag station, and some other signage. So there's a lot of stuff here, but basically what it's trying to do is just make the access, or make the park more accessible and used by a bigger variety of people, a bigger number of people. So that's kind of where things stand at the moment, and if you have questions, I'm happy to try and address those.
Rob, what Vermont, New Hampshire river organization are you working with, that in turn is working with the dam renewal project?
Yeah, so the Connecticut River Conservancy is the one that we've been working with the most. Kathy Erfer has come to the commission and talked to us about the relicensing, and so she's the one, if we were to have a management plan, she's the one I would put it in the hands of and say, you know, here's what we would do. And she's promised to keep us in the loop about when the public, the opportunity for public input is going to happen.
And as someone who used to fly fish in my past quite a lot, we all know that there's been some tragic deaths at the falls with the water levels. I mean, this, we have no control over water levels, but do you see that changing at all?
Yeah, actually, that's a really interesting point, because the reason the water levels change so dramatically is that the power companies hold the water until it's really high, and then when they, when they can make the most money off it, they release a lot of water. And so one of the things that the Connecticut River Conservancy and others are trying to do is to encourage them to let the water flow more naturally through there, so they could make, they could make their money, but it might be less money, it might be spread out over 24 hours, so that it would be much more like a natural flooding of the river. And that would stop a lot of that wild fluctuation of the river level. So that is certainly part of the discussion.
Good, good. Just my own comment. I thought the management plan covered all the major topics I could think of, safety, accessibility, endangered species. I found myself on holiday morning kind of a little frightened by the ghost stories. So the whole cultural piece is, I think you concluded it very well. Thoughts?
A lot of work to do to this.
Yeah, I'm keeping busy.
I have some questions. Do you want to go first? I'm going to take up a lot of time. So, Rob, first of all, is this the Sumner Falls Town Park or the Sumner Falls Recreation Area? Because I see both.
Yes. Well, there's a sign down there that calls it a recreation area. I think that we would prefer calling it Town Park, but that's completely up to us. I think that that's something that we could do in the management plan, is decide, here's what we're going to call it, and when we do the signage, here's what the sign is going to say.
Well, what, when it was transferred to the town, what was it legally called?
I don't know.
I mean, I think it'd be good to have some historical consistency there, just because decades from now, you want to make, keep the record clear for people.
Yeah, I don't think, when it was transferred to the town, I think they just called it a parcel of land at Sumner Falls. I don't think they specified that it was a town park. But the town may have, when they accepted it, they may have put something in there, but that was, that was before I was around, so I'm not sure what that says. Maybe Gordon, you?
I don't have the history, no, I don't. Jaylock or something.
The recreation area seemed, like, the first, when I saw this town park, it was like, oh, I've never heard of that before. I've always heard it referred to as recreation area. You know, I don't have a talk on it, I don't care either way, but just to maintain the consistency. Although I would say recreation area seems more inclusive than town park. I think town park, I think, you know, people walking around a green or something. I don't know, the recreation sounds more active.
Well, even the Sumner Falls, you know, do we put an apostrophe S? Is it Sumner's Falls? Is it Sumner Falls? And so we have deliberately in all of our stuff, we decided we were going to call it Sumner Falls, because if you look on the map, that's what it says on the map.
Oh, it says Sumner Falls?
It says Sumner Falls without the apostrophe S.
Oh, interesting.
And so we tried to be consistent with that. But again, I think that that's something we could decide, okay, from now on, it's going to be called this.
Right.
And just make it happen.
Yeah, I think leaving that S off is probably for the best, because you always have people confusing the whole apostrophe thing. That's always a mess. So then, on page two, I was confused, so at the bottom, it says, "Subject to the retained right of TransCanada to use the parcel to electric, for electric generation and transmission." So I thought, I didn't really understand it. I thought they conveyed that piece to us, to the town, but they maintained something.
Yeah, so it's really, if you try and go back through the deeds and find out what is allowed and what isn't allowed, it's not as straightforward as one might hope, because there were several power companies that were involved. They bought different pieces of land along the river that they thought they might turn into dams, and all of those different parcels have different rules. And so if you look at the deed, it says, you know, go back and look at the deed for some other property in New Hampshire, and you'll see what the rules are there, and then if you go there, it refers you to somewhere else. And so it is very confusing to follow, but the language from the deed does say that TransCanada retains the right to use the parcel for electric generation and transmission-related purposes. That's, I think that's verbatim from the deed. They have never shown any interest in doing that, but I think when they transferred the property, they wanted to retain that right.
So that, the town could put resources into this, building up this park, whatever area, and then they could come in and...
I don't know. We'd have to talk to a lawyer.
All right, so, let's see, I've got some more questions. So you said something about, how many parking spots are down here now?
Well, there are two kind of parking areas. There's an upper one that has maybe space for three or four cars, and then there's another one that has maybe space for two if they're small. And then down on the beach, there's a spot that's supposed to be for handicap only, and it's marked that way. But if you go down there on any given day, there will be a vehicle parked there that's not a handicap vehicle, it's just a lazy vehicle. So I would say there's probably space for six or seven cars in the parking spaces, and then people just park along the road. If there's, if the parking lots are full, they'll park along the road and just connect it. And it's not unusual to find a lot of cars parked along the road.
So, so I'm jumping all over the place.
Yeah.
I have a lot of questions. I did try to ask you these before the meeting. I sent you an email.
Oh, sorry.
Well, no, it was, I didn't know how to reach you, so I sent it to C. Commission.
Oh, yeah.
So, there's a class A noxious weed mentioned. Which one is that of the ones that are mentioned here? Is it a loose stripe or the knotweed? That would be my guess of those.
Yeah, I don't know. There is loose stripe there. There's also knotweed, which is really bad. There's that black swallowwort all over the place. So there are at least three that are...
So is anybody addressed, is anybody addressing those?
Well, I started about four years ago, and I was going to focus on the knotweed that was right there on the beach. When I started, it was over my head. There was a stand there, probably about as big as, you know, the table out to here, and it was over my head. And I went like, once a week, and would hack it down to the ground, and stuff it in trash bags and pick it up. And I did that for about three years. And then I, when I got it down so that it was just little, I would dig, try and dig it out, dig out the roots. And it would only come up, you know, by the time I was done, it was only coming up a few inches every time I went. But I stopped last year, and it's coming right back again. So it's a tough problem.
It is.
And the part that's threatening the St. John's Wort, that's the one, that's further down the beach, and you can't even get to it by walking very easily. You have to like, take a boat and to do, you know, any kind of control on it. I suspect what we would have to do is cut it and put, you know, little drops of Roundup in the cut stem, which is something that people have done to try and control it. And if you do that for a period of years, you can, you can knock it down, but it, you know, it's a really hard problem.
I know. So, thank you for that. So, one thing I thought is, maybe we should issue permits to those commercial entities that use the site. Like you're saying, that electric companies are making money from a public resource. Well, these kayakers and whatever other enterprises, I mean, we maintain that site, they contribute nothing.
That's true.
You know, I, I think they should have to kick in a little bit.
Yeah, there was some talk about that a few years ago, and if I remember rightly, the feeling was that there were some liability complications. If we did that, then we would have assumed more liability than if we just let them use it for free.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, it's something we could look into.
About donations, solicit donations from them.
They could donate, that would be nice.
Yeah.
I don't think they could donate to the town. They'd have to donate to like, a friend's of Sumner's Falls, blah, blah, blah.
Well, then we'd have to form a nonprofit, and if it was going to be tax deductible, we'd have to make it by the 1C3, and that's a real pain in the butt.
You need a board.
Okay, I don't have many more.
I'm glad you read this very, I'm really impressed.
Why are you reading? I'm like, I've been sick, Rob. This is the best thing I've done. So, yeah, you said the explorer options were long-term, so it shouldn't be erosion issues. So one other thing about, you know, building these trails, I was thinking, it's a really steep slope. It depends where you put these trails, right? I would think people would want them along the water, blah, 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 but that's where it's really steep. Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that rather than try and build them on the slope, try and build them up on the top.
Okay.
Because there, it's relatively flat, and you can get some grades just walking down the gravel road. There are places where you can look out, and there'd be like, a gap in the trees, and you can see the river, and you can see the mountain on the other side, and it's just beautiful. And it doesn't, you know, you don't have to make any trail at all, the road is right there.
You could maybe cut a couple of trees for the Vista, imper the Vista.
You could do that, yeah.
Okay, just hang out with me a little bit longer.
No, no, don't worry.
So, for this to carry any weight with the relicensing group, does this have to be approved and approved by the select board plan? And if that's true, we need to do it soon if these things are starting this month.
Yes, the period for public comment probably lasts for several months.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like they're going to have a two-week period. If it's a 50-year process for relicensing, I would guess that if they opened the public comment period now, it would probably go for at least six months.
Okay, so we have some time.
We have some time, I think. And they have delayed when that public comment was going to start. First, it was going to be September, and now it's November, so it, you know, we're not sure when it actually will start. But I think that having a plan like this in hand would be helpful.
Yeah.
So if we could, you know, if we could move fairly quickly on getting something approved, then both, you know, the commission can get to work doing some of the stuff that we're proposing, and we could have the plan available whenever that public comment period is.
Okay, I got one more, one more thing. So getting people outside, isn't that one of the goals of the ARPA money?
Well, we, you and I heard that certainly in the presentation at the wrong biggest cities in town and state.
So I would think, you know, fund some, some money your way for what you're proposing.
And I also have been dreaming of creating a master plan for all our public spaces using ARPA loans as a long-range plan for, you know, Rob, you know, hinted at the first steps with the signage and creating a logo that's identified with trails and use. the first steps with the signage and creating a logo that's identified with trails in use. I've spoken to some folks that love trees and they point out that a number of trees around Rec Center and the library are dying and we should be replacing them and so on. So I think you're on, I agree with you that, and I would just, I would love to broaden it to all our public spaces.
Yeah.
So Mary, just one comment back. So I believe Rob is correct that the Hydrow retains a access or usability of that land, for lack of a better term. However, I think what's being proposed as far as trails or even additional parking at some point is not an extravagant, you know, it's not like it's buildings or anything that can, you know, would need to be knocked down or anything. I think it's in line with the uses of, of what the property was given to us for or exchanged with us. So that's just my thoughts.
No, absolutely. I'm not saying, thinking anything they're saying is extravagant. I'm just thinking, what if we put all this energy into this piece of property? Like, how likely is it that they're gonna use it?
Well, I don't think they would use it for a dam because that's why they gave it up in the first place, is they decided it wasn't feasible.
Ah, okay.
So what they would be talking about is if there were a transmission line or something like that that they wanted to put across. And I don't know where they would put such a thing from and to, because the dam is in wild, so the transmission lines are not gonna need to go along the river. So I think that the, I think it was probably just CYA language that they put in there, and I don't think there's any serious threat that they might actually do it.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you for...
We have some more questions.
So when he started his, his presentation, you know, he talked, so you can make a motion to adopt it now, but I think he was asking for some feedback and/or whether he, you felt as though he should go out to, back to a broader audience and get feedback from, you know, various members of the public and then come back again for adoption. So you got a little bit of, you know, if you think that he's done his work and due diligence and you liked everything that's there, I think that you could adopt it tonight. But if you feel as though, you know, it needs to be polished a little bit more, you want a little bit more public input, you can direct Bob to do that, Rob to do that, or if you're good with it and you think he's...
Yeah, I actually do not want you to approve it tonight. Because I feel like what we voted on when we approved it was, this is a draft that's ready to go to the Select Board for comment. But it's not, this is a draft that we're happy with and done with. So, yeah, if you guys have feedback you wanna give us to, to change the plan, we're happy to do that. If you don't, we'll just polish it and bring it back ourselves.
Yeah, Rob, just a couple of comments. And about the power thing, you know, I wouldn't, I would rule that out as, as never happening in my own mind because of the push to get renewable resources and the possibility that technology might figure out a neat way to do it without being too expensive. There's not much head there. I mean, obviously they can't. I'm not sure how, there are rapids upriver, of course, from there, so I don't know how far, Jay, Jay could probably answer that to get an idea of how, how feasible that might be. My main concern or interest would be the forest. And have you walked in, in the woods there?
Yeah.
I just wondered what species were growing there, what, what it's like there.
Well, up on the plateau to the left of the road, it's, I don't think there's anything particularly unusual. You know, it's, it's hemlock and it's pine and there are some hardwoods, but, you know, it's maple beech kind of stuff. But I think that that's having a forester walk through there with us and say, oh, you know, if you did this, you could encourage X, Y, Z. I think that would be worth doing and it would be free because the common forester would do that for nothing.
Yeah, well, doing stuff in the woods is expensive. There's nothing wrong with a management plan which is do nothing, let nature do it. That's a good, that's a good approach. I, I remember sitting in a selectmen's meeting, oh, many years ago, 20 years ago, whatever, and talking about our Old Town Forest up in Geneva, and there was some interest in doing some logging on 18 acres. And there's no way, they would have even broken even on that. They would have destroyed the, destroyed the woods for nothing. And I would think that same principle probably would apply to this because there's so many, it's not, it's not a nice spot to, to get in there and work, I don't think. And the, if you made some nice trails so people could enjoy the trees, that, there would be quite a value to that, I would think, just...
Yeah, I don't see this as, as a forest resource money-making thing. I think a recreation park, there, there might be worth taking some trees down to improve the view in certain spots.
Yeah, if you had a nice spot where you could look out at that, yeah, that'd be a neat thing. And then, and there's some value in opening up the woods too, just for the wildlife, although nature usually takes care of it, you know, laundry too. You know, there's some wings that you weren't counting on, but, yeah. And the other, only other thing I was wondering, where is that, I'm looking at the map, where does that road cross in to get to the gravel pit?
Where does...
The road that goes to the gravel pit, where?
Oh.
That's just south of the gravel pit. Is it like halfway between the entrance or does it parallel the road?
No, it's, it's fairly close to where the access road comes in. So this, this map is originally in color and it shows up a little better, but you can see where the access road is.
Yeah.
And then there's a dark contour line just south of that.
Yeah.
And the gravel pit road starts just past that, just south of it.
So does it parallel Route 5?
So it, yes, it parallels Route 5 and then you can hear the interstate, so where 5 goes, I guess, over the interstate or under the interstate? 5 goes over the interstate. And you, as you walk down the gravel road, it's kind of running along that northern, or that western edge of the property. And in fact, that corner, which is what David and I were looking for, that southwest corner post, is within probably 10 feet of the gravel pit road.
Which, you're talking about corner way up here?
Yeah, so this corner right here.
So does that road?
So the road starts around here and it runs close to this edge all the way down.
So it stays on the town property all the way?
I think so, yeah. That's, that's something that I would like a little more information about. And it would certainly, if we had a survey done, that would clarify that. But knowing where that road is, because another thing I think we need to do with signage is to tell people, you know, this gravel road is used by big trucks and they're moving fast and don't go wandering down there, you know, in your Toyota because you'll get in the way. And, and people who are, who don't know where the falls are, get on that road and they think they're gonna find it and they drive all the way down to the gravel pit.
Well, I think this is great. I mean, this is so thorough and shows a lot of work, like Morpheus said, and I just am so much more appreciative of that resource. Yeah, so thank you and thanks to the commission, really, really good.
Thank you.
Hi, hi. Hey, um, yeah, so I definitely want to second what Mary just said. I have four comments written down. They're very quick. The first one was, great job. I had to like actively think about why we sent you back to, to, to give it back to us because it, it just read so well and everything seemed really well done. So, um, thank you for that. So I have maybe one addition I would like to see on the plan. So when, when you outline the history of the spot, the only thing you don't talk about, you don't integrate into your discussion about education regarding the history is the Abenaki stuff. So I would like to see some integration of, maybe like some module on the Abenaki or the archaeological remains from there, and then possibly considering doing that in collaboration with the local Abenaki group. So that was the only thing that I would add to it. With regards to the board, I think we should write a public comment in the public comment period for the, the dam renewal. I think if, it would be great, yes, if it comes from the Conservation Commission, but if we get two bites of the apple, we might as well take two bites of the apple. And if we can submit a public comment as a board, I think that would be really awesome. And then the last note I had was also seconding what Mary said. I'm just repeating Mary at this point in time, but this is a great candidate for ARPA funds. You know, we wanna, we wanna get people outside, so let's think about how we can use those funds to build up this recreational area. So those were my thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments for Rob?
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, please pass our thanks along to the other commission members.
Hi, Mr. Pidigal.
Do we have any new business? Hearing none, let's go on to the manager's notes.
Let me skip my glasses.
Picture in the kiosk down there, pictures of log drives. Do you know the Connecticut River is not named after the state of Connecticut, it's actually an Abenaki name for the great river.
Really? That's so interesting. Where does it start?
Starts in the, it's 405 miles, 406 miles long, traverses three states, starts in northern New Hampshire and the New Hampshire Lake District is close to the Canadian border.
You can confirm this?
I've seen it. It's a little tiny stream way up on the Canadian, just on the Canadian border. We're snowmobiling and the guys took me on the show, man.
That's so cool.
The headwaters.
New Hampshire, the three states, New Hampshire, New Hampshire, into the ocean.
Into the ocean. It is the largest east coast river.
Quite the river guide.
Hey, that's definitely your bicycle tour guide.
Oh.
That will be how much? Dave, you're back.
Yeah, yes. Biggest focus at the moment is, continues to be on Mill Street Bridge and putting the detour on Quarry Road into place. Where I, in two weeks, hopefully two of these states will come together either the week of November 15th or the week after Thanksgiving, be the week of November 29th. We need to put a gate into place on Quarry Road is probably the most important thing that we need to do at this point in time. Twin State's gonna put some big stones into place off the town right away in the greater Upper Valley Solid Waste District field to kind of keep four-wheelers and people kind of off in that area because the gates will be open 24 hours a day once we, we detour. So there's concern there. So those things need to be put into place, but we also need a user agreement as well. I've yet to get that from Twin State, although I met with them on Friday or Thursday. They said I'd see it early this week, so that's something that needs to be put into place and signed by both parties before we proceed. So I'm looking to kind of expedite that. So really the gate in that agreement, Twin State I think will take care of the stone, just to put the pieces into place so that we can then turn and do and assess the bridge itself. Again, we're gonna do Miller Construction is gonna do the assessment on the bridge. Depending on how much work needs to be done, we, if there's a lot of work, we'll probably have to utilize the B Trans Engineering to put that out to bid. Otherwise, if it's just the damages that we see presently, we can have Miller continue to do that. Again, we have $25,000, $30,000 of grant money to kind of work with that on this. But that's a, that's just, you know, a lot of moving parts and just a real concern and just a real project on that to kind of get that into place.
Dave, can you explain the gate you talked about and what the purpose of the gate is?
So right now, Twin State Sand and Gravel, when they're not open, they have a gate on Quarry Road. The gate is down by Quarry Road and Route 5.
Yeah.
It's to keep the public, this fairly, actually, it's not right at Route 5, there's a little housing, like a mobile home park right at the basement. So right beyond that, there's a gate to keep anybody out of there when they're not in operation. Once we close the bridge, we need to detour, and that detour is gonna be essentially 24/7. So that Quarry Road is gonna need to be open all the way up to the Old Town Highway. So the gate will be on Quarry Road right after the Old Town Highway. So once somebody takes a right and goes towards Mill Street, there'll be a gate so you can't go any further.
Can't go into the quarry.
Exactly, that's the concern. So that needs to be in place. So Miller Construction can install that gate, hopefully on the week of the 15th, and maybe have their crew ready to go to assess it. If not, they'll have the crew ready to go on the week after Thanksgiving, on the week of the 29th. However, we can't do anything until that, that agreement is signed. So I'm waiting on that and then for our lawyer to review it and our insurance company to review it, and then we'll move forward. So it's, it's actually coming into place. Last two cents on this. So both Twin State and Greater Upper Valley Solid Waste District are under an Act 250 permit. As part of the process, we had to make sure that this wasn't going to affect the Act 250 permit at all. So we had to ask for essentially, it's called a jurisdictional opinion from the Act 250 coordinator. That came back today, actually, saying that it doesn't affect it and we're okay going through there, but that was yet just another box that needed to be checked before we can move forward. We, we checked that box. Of course, there's like eight parties on that that received that. If anybody wanted to appeal the decision, I guess they could, but, you know, it's pretty Unfortunately, paving has been put off until spring. If everyone may recall, that included County Road, also included the horseshoe there, Bowers to Mace Hill Road, and a small section of Queachy Road. Just a combination of rain in July and just lack of workers this summer held them up. Obviously have had quite the opportunity to speak with Blacktop, who was owned by, it's owned by Twin State Sand and Gravel, same people. They basically said they ran into the same problem this year, so it's not just Tupac in unto themselves.
Does that put us in line for early in the summer or?
Should be before, before May. Uh, should be before, before May.
I suspect that worked out well before.
Yes, only, it backs us up a little bit, so hopefully we turn around in, like, July or August, in September, do yet the next fiscal year's, uh, paving. If you recall, I think we ended up doing everything in May, two years' worth, and we had to hold off the next fiscal year so that things would catch up. But, um, it, it worked out, hopefully it works out again. Tax sale, Mary, November 22nd.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't be celebratory, but I'm glad that there's some movement there, and I'm sorry that people are, got themselves into this situation.
So that is moving forward, and has been posted, there are seven properties that are affected by this, um, so we'll see what transpires. Usually it's only one or two that end up going to sale, so we'll see what happens.
And if the board would like, I'll volunteer again to represent the town should the town need to buy a property or sell.
Last thing of note, Planning Commission, you may recall, like, a year ago, they were, uh, we had the, uh, the BMB up on Heartland Hill, um, went to the Environmental Commission. Uh, long story short, there was some inconsistencies in the town plan. They have, they are getting there, there's a few more comments that they need to kind of refresh on the town plan, but, uh, they are getting closer to having an updated town plan. I think they did a little bit more work than they originally set out to do, but, uh, they are getting there. They will need to have a public hearing and comment period, and then they essentially, uh, push it to the select board. It essentially goes through the same process, uh, and then you end up approving that. So I, February maybe, uh, I would expect that to land here.
Who is the current chair of the planning commission?
So Jay just stepped down, but then again, he really didn't. Um, so Jay's kind of backing away a little bit from the planning commission, so there's kind of a shared responsibility between Charles Jeffries and, um, German, Dan, is it Dan?
Dan.
Dan German. And Jay is still, if I can't find anybody, I still communicate with Jay. So Jay's still there, so there's a little bit of a shared, shared thing going on there. Pretty yet, much it.
When do they have to have that approved, do you know?
Well, it's really up to them, so the inconsistencies in the town plan are still there. So if anybody comes down the Pike or, you know, any applications to the planning commission, uh, I'm sorry, to Act 250, and, um, you know, the planning commission or the town wants to take a role in the Act 250 process, uh, you know, those inconsistencies remain. So that's, you know, not the most beneficial thing, I think, to the town. You know, the decision went against the planning commission the last time on Heartland Hill because of the inconsistency, so that's really the urgent matter there. Otherwise, it was approved in like 2017, like my very second meeting here, and/or it was like two meetings before I got here. Uh, so I think it's seven years now that it needs to be renewed, so they've got another three years or so. But this'll give them a pretty fresh update. They took on the energy chapter, they took on, um, if you like, forest tracts. Um, they took on a couple of things, because legislatively they need to now add at least the forest tracts, because it won't pass the regional commission without it. So they had to tinker with some things, but. They're kind of on their own schedule.
Uh, Dave, I have, our next item is an executive session. Before we ask Martha to read our, uh, verbiage, um, how do we keep Curtis? We don't, it's obviously, it's not to be recorded as an executive session, but is there any way?
Why do you make it pull up on your phone? Um, I don't even know, because I, I think the meeting ID is a public meeting ID. I'm not sure how a private meeting ID set up works for executive session. I think practically, yeah, I think it would be a separate Zoom call that just has Curtis. If you guys have that capability, I'm not sure, but.
Okay, we didn't think about that beforehand.
Phil probably has that guy, but well, he's very tech savvy.
FaceTime him.
Yeah, he's really good, just FaceTime him on.
Curtis, I could maybe try sending you a team's invite.
But wouldn't that be a public ID thing? No, okay.
And use your laptop.
Yep.
Okay, Martha.
I have a one thing from Nancy at the library.
Uh-huh, please.
She, um, listened to our discussion with Rob last week. Did she email you about this?
Sean, is this, uh, is this how? Of course.
The book has those in favor of rediscovering the status of town leading and community. And she contacted.
Probably wasn't a correspondent.
So you guys are.
Well, please don't be a. She did a really good.
Executive session. What is happening?
Curtis, uh, we are trying to connect you via a team, so Dave will send you an email.
All right, but can we do the, can we pass the motions first?
I'm listening, Curtis, go ahead.
Can we pass the motions?
Yes, Martha's gonna beat it.
Martha, just give it right now.
Uh, we have the notion that executive session is necessary because premature general public knowledge would replace the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage.